Looking for made in Montana food products? Look no further than Town and Country Foods of Dillon. Looking for made in Montana food products? Look no further than Town and Country Foods of Dillon.
Any more you guys time or questions? It's kind of an unofficial meeting. It wasn't supposed to hit 20, 48 hours in advance, but it's just an informational meeting for the business owners of what we can get from the contractors and what their plans are going to be. So, biggest thing, they finally got this street up and down, so they have to put a four-way in there. They're hoping this week or next to finish up and get a valve turned on the south side of that intersection so they can get it turned off and start doing their tests. Once they get that far, they can do the tests from Washington to Idaho, Montana, Idaho, and from center to Bannick, three ways. When they get it all finished up and have the valve in, they have to chlorinate it. They dump highly chlorinated water into it to kill any bacteria, anything in it. They drain it, put water in it, and they have to do a pressure check if it holds. Then they can go up, put reg good water in it, get a bacteria sample. They send it to Helena. If it leaves here at 2:30, they can do the test that night, but it takes, you know, 48 hours to get your test back then. They have to wait usually 24 hours to do a second bacteria test, so they take another test, send it up. So, a lot of times, once they get pipe in the ground, all of a sudden, everything just stops and people wise going on their testing. They can't get the test any faster. So, that's a lot of that. If they're going down, you'll notice they're just trying to tear the center of the street up as they go down both ways because they're going to put the pipe in the ground, then bury it back to traffic or gravel so people can drive on it. And when they get their test finished, they can go back, start digging in the services for all the businesses. That's their big push right now. They're going to try to get to that corner of Bannick and Idaho before... And a lot of the questions is why they started here and work. Yesterday, I was driving around. I seen John over here, the engineer, and I asked him that question. He said it was a stupid place to start. The contractors thought it was a stupid place to start, but it was in the contract, that's where they had to start. Because they have this piece of pipe in here, there's no way to hook water into it. So, they would have had to go all the way down to Reader to hook in, or as they did, they went across that way to hook in. And if they said they wish, they would have fought harder. Said, "No, we're going to do Virginia, get across here, and then go down without tearing the street up and leaving it open." So, it's a lot in the contract, a lot of miscommunication between probably the city, the contracts, and the engineers and what the contract had in. So, that's pretty much all I know. They sent out a new thing. They said they're going to start on Idaho, center to Bannick, June 20th. Bannick to Montana, or Bannick, Montana, Idaho, June 20th. Have already been working on those. Then Idaho Street from Bannick to Glendale, July 5th, they want to get started on. So, hopefully by July 5th, or would it be two weeks back, they'll have all these up and going, the main lines in. Then, as they go back, you know, they'll have parts of the street shut down so they can start putting services in. The other thing they ran into that no one knew about, from Montana Street to Idaho Street on Bannick, is concrete underneath that. Everyone said there was no concrete under that. They said it was just pavement. So, they're busting through concrete. That's something they didn't know about. So, what they think, should have taken them a day to go from that to dig across. It's going to take them longer. That alleyway, there's a lot of conduits running through, power sewer. There's, he says, there's a, I talked to, can't even think of his name, the engineer. There's a big conduit they ran in down here at Virginia Street. They ran it at Reader Street when they were coming across last year. No one claims it, but it's a big power line or information line. No one knows who it belongs to. So, they know what's there at least, and they won't dig into it, or they're going to be careful going across that alleyway. So, there's three marks down there for information, stuff under the ground, infrastructure on the ground they know about, but they know, they're assuming it is because if they have that end and that end, they're going to assume it's in the middle. So, they know what's there at least so they can be prepared for it. So, I don't know. Any other questions about the progress? Yes?
Yeah, so I've got a question. I just, I just want to clarify a question. You know, mainly on the timeline. Just so that I fully can understand. So, I see them digging down this center. Obviously, they're going to label name.
Yeah.
And they're going to fill it back in. They're still going sidewalk to sidewalk.
Yes.
Correct? So, after they fill it in, they're going to open the street back up, gravel? At what time then, on their timeline, are they going to come back to this block and tear up the whole street?
Okay, they're going to come back in after they get, so they have water, and then start putting services into each building?
No, I got that, but I'm looking for a timeline.
Timeline. They never really gave me a timeline of dates.
Because right now, I still see this going right to August. I see down, down, still being closed for the most part, going to August. You may or may not agree with that, but that's what I see. That's a big concern. And I want to go back to the contract real quickly. They keep, keep talking about the fact that this was a bad idea to start here. They're jumping around. That contract, and I photocopied the page I'm talking about, I think it might also be written on my phone. Right in the middle of the contract, it talks about required work schedule. It talks about starting at Helena and then working south. So, that's what I just can't wrap my head around. Why, why have they been allowed to circumvent that timeline on that contract? Maybe I'm not giving the grasp on it, but to me, it sounds like they're just doing whatever they want to do in terms of where they're going to work, and they're not following that prescribed contract that says you're to start here, work south. And that was our concern from the get-go as business owners mainly because we saw a catastrophe coming. This thing went into the peak tourism months, which we're now in. And that was my concern. Corey based that concern, Jeremy did. And now, we're there. We're exactly facing what it was that we were afraid of. If this thing wasn't followed sequentially, and I didn't know how sequentially it was laid out until I read the contract. It's very specific. And I just, for the liking, I can't get why they're being allowed to just jump all over the amount that they're doing. And now, it appears they're going to go down there and they're working their way north. Now, I'm hearing that they're going to dig up the center. And don't get me wrong, I'm thrilled. When I came today and saw all this activity out, that's a blessing. I wish that would have happened weeks ago, but I'm happy with it now. But my concern is knowing what work's still asked and done just on the block in front of my business, I just, for the liking, I can't see how this is not going to go into August. So, I want to break that point. The last thing is on May 2nd, I asked Mr. Shumlin, when I asked him, "What's your ballpark for paving?" And I think Mr. Hannah, you were there, Aaron Giddley, and if you're sitting over here. And he said, "I can't answer that." And I said, "Why not?" He said, "Because we haven't subcontracted the pavement yet." So, I'm still wanting to know. I have, I asked him to let me know when they subcontracted that pavement. So, can you answer that? Do they in fact have a paving company lined up to pave this?
Yeah, the ones that were paving all Washington and back over here, that's their paving.
And are they also going to be doing main?
Yes.
Idaho Street?
That's what I heard.
Because on May 2nd, that wasn't the case.
Yeah, because I was talking to them that one day, and they were talking about it.
Okay, so since May 2nd, and he has contracted paving company, you're confident of that?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. So, back to the contract. I mean, do you, does anybody in this room see an issue with that? That they're just circumventing the contract and just going wherever they want to work? Or am I the only one? And why is?
What they told me, because they had to hook up to water when they started here. So, if they would have continued down here, they said, they would have had, had the whole street tore up to get down to, right in front of JZ Park is where that ended last year. And they would have had to dig all that stuff up, down to there before they could have done all the tests. So, then...
Because just for an extra reason, really, at least on the matrix, the timeline I looked at from Mungus Construction, is that they were to be completed with our block by April 27. That was the original plan. We're now on, what, June 21st? And I just think this thing is way off kilter.
Yeah, I was, I'm writing questions down. I want to get with the contractors and talk. I might come, what time do you come to your business? You know what page that is on, so I can get it?
I don't think the pages are actually numbered in the contract. It's about right in the middle. It's all in the pages. But I've got it on my phone, I'd be happy to share it. And then, because the third point, I made this point last week during the meeting is, you know, that contract said that they were going to make every, they were to make every attempt to minimize negative impact to the businesses. I'm going to tell you, I don't think they've done that. I don't think they've even tried. I really don't. I'm not being a negative nelly. I'm just saying, I think that they are, again, working outside the scope of that contract. It's just plain English. And why have they been allowed to work outside of it? I hope that we're considering assessing fines and penalties because it is crushing, it's crushing us. Just before the meeting started, I handed a packet, an open request to Councilmember Schwan and hoping that he can get some assistance. But I've got to tell you, honestly, there's going to be some of us that aren't going to be here after December. It just can't, it cannot continue. And I just feel like they're being allowed to just go, do whatever they want to do, work wherever. They're just not following the contract. It's plain. And I didn't think they'd be here tonight. I was hoping they would be. I appreciate the updated information, but I just can't express my displeasure enough about them not following the contract. And that's all I've got to say.
And that's what it is, is, you know, I don't know what we have scheduled for next week, but I'll try to get with them and say, "Okay, can we have a meeting sometime with the contractor?" Then, so give them a week's notice because it kind of came up last week. And with the Juneteenth holiday and everything, it kind of threw everything off. That's why I sent this out as a tentative meeting. I didn't know if I was going to get flashback because I didn't give a 48-hour notice for a meeting and everything. So, I just set it up as a tentative meeting, informational meeting. But I'll get with them and see if we can get a firm date to get, you know, the contractors here and engineers.
I have one quick question. Are you guys aware that the company was sold?
I heard that, you know, I didn't know it for sure, but I heard Kip bought it from Mungus.
Okay, so was that, so the contract, is it, I still have to honor that contract?
Yes, Mungus, it's Mungus until all the final finished and warranties up. Mungus is still on.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm here as a citizen and somebody whose tax dollars are being used to pay for this project. We, as a city council, and this is what I tell people when they ask, "How did we get here?" We, as a city council, decided six months ago that we would have, that you, that the mayor and/or the Director of Operations would meet with the contractors and the engineers each week. I assumed Monday morning, you would meet with them each week, and they would tell you what they accomplished the week before. And those would be like four or five bulleted, "We accomplished this, 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 and this", and the five things that they hoped to accomplish this week. The Director of Operations would type that up, and he would hand deliver that to all of the businesses along Idaho Street and the side streets that were affected. He would also go ahead and be a regularly scheduled person on one of the radio shows so that the public could be informed on what had been accomplished last week and what would be accomplished next week. There were, that would have alleviated some problems in that downtown businesses would have known what was going to happen and what wasn't going to happen. I still think that that, you know, until we get that system going, it's going to be a constant confusion with downtown businesses. I think, you know, the idea that this is going to go into August is very aspirational at best. But I also, so I hope that the city will consider going back to what they said they were going to do and do it. But the second part of it is, my colleague on the council, Dan Nye, I thought nailed it last week when he said, "When you listen to all the problems, well, the problem we have here is we need a babysitter for the babysitter." And what he meant by that was that we hired the engineering company to do the construction management that's carried out by the contractors. So far, the contractors have just kind of, as everybody has talked about, they have ping ponged around the city of Dillon with nobody understanding why they're ping ponging all over the place instead of starting at Helena Street and moving south the way the contract was laid out in the contract. The engineering firm has come to the city council and asked to be paid twice as much money for half as much work that was stated in the contract. And we agreed to it. So, we have set up a system whereby the engineers, who are supposed to handle the construction management, are just like, woo! You know, they have opened the floodgates, and they're just willing to spend as much money for doing half as much work, and nobody's watching the detail. Nobody's watching the detail. And so, that's the second part of this, is that if there was some system whereby every single week, there was a small report that said, "This is what we accomplished last week. This is what we hope to accomplish next week", and that you can lay those side by side by side, at least that is something in writing, and it keeps everybody going in the same direction. It isn't clear management of the project, but at least it's something that keeps us all going in the same direction. Right now, it's just... I mean, we have a meeting tonight, and they're not here. These people, it's hard to go to work every day and show up at your workplace before 8 o'clock and then come to a meeting at night. So, I guess I'll end by saying I, for the logistics and for the...
If you take that section out of the Beaver Edward crossings that we had a deal with the border under the interstate end there, we're fairly still on budget. Corey?
Cost of doing business, when you break a bit, that earshot, you pay for it, right?
Yes.
Why did we pay them? I'm sorry, but man, I told my dad that. He was sick. He's built all these roads around here. Cost of doing business? We've got to start thinking about that. Sorry, these guys are, know we have that ORPA funds, and they're milking this. So, we've got to think about that, okay? If we're going to do a drill bit for $250,000, they broke that. We didn't. Our community didn't break that. They broke it. That brick could have been broken before. Did anybody ask them that? Wear and tear on a bit? That thing was probably already ready to break. They broke it. We paid for it. You never pay for somebody else's equipment. They have insurance. Did anybody think of that, though? "We got money, let's spend it." And now, I'm out of business. You guys all know that, right? You guys heard that? And I told you at the first meeting, March. Damn. So, you said, "Corey, how's this going to affect you?" It's like, he says, "July late, July I'm out of business." And I want to say thank you for coming downtown every day. Thank you. Because I haven't seen anybody else. And who's got my back? Anybody? This community I love, okay? And you're saying that you're a city council person, but you're a citizen? No, you're a city council person first. So, you should be walking around town too, okay? Yeah, you pay taxes, but right now, you're a city council person. Who's got everybody's back in here? I don't hate anybody. I'm not mad at anybody. I just want to know that. Who's got each other's back? Are you for Dillon or are you against it? Because these meetings that you guys have every week go on forever and ever. And you should read your stuff before. And you know what the meeting's about. That's just my two cents.
I'm Debbie from the bookstore. And, you know, part of the problem for us, which we have shared, is when we're telling our customers how they can get to us. And then, you know, we're told, and apparently, you guys may be new, that Washington was going to be torn up behind us at the same time this was torn up. And I had days where, you know, our front was closed. We made every effort to make our alley accessible, and we had someone, I said, "Come in the alley. You can get down the alley." And they couldn't get out Bannick. I said, "You can get in and then, you know, back out." I was hoping I turned, I help people do U-turns up here. They probably don't want me backing their vehicle out of the alley. But someone else pulled in, parked, got out. Well, then, my customer was stuck. And so, if we, if we had that, if you guys knew that, "Okay, they're not going to get down your alleys today because they're tearing up Washington. We told you they were going to do Idaho Street, and then they're on Washington, tearing it up", suddenly, we're landlocked. And no one's answering our questions. And we're sitting there feeling like, wow, what do we do now? You know, and I'm lucky. I'm doing home deliveries. I'm meeting people. I met someone at Rocky Mountain Supply the other day with a, with a set of guitar strings. I was happy to do that. But when we don't know, and we tell someone, and then what happened that day that they announced they were going to be tearing up Bannick starting June 20th? It's like, oh, what about us? I had just told an elderly customer. I said, "You know what? You can pull in. Pull around that sign. I know you think it's wrong. I know you think you're breaking the law, but you can do it." So, and it wasn't 40 minutes later, all these big chunks of cement are in Bannick. You can't get to us. You can't get in our alley. And I've got this old lady trying to get there, and no one came in and said, "Don't panic. This is only for two or three hours." It looked to us like Bannick was going to get ripped up. Center was closed. Here we are with no one telling us. That was the day I called Todd in tears. That was also the day that I wrote my letter to you guys. I have since written one to the construction company, but I may have faxed it to the wrong number because the stuff we had when they told us our... because the stuff we had when they told us our water lines were going to, our water was going to be turned off has different numbers than the one we got telling us they were starting on June 20th. So that's where the communication is that we need. Because all of us, I closed early to get here by six. You know, meetings in the afternoon, we have to close our stores. Every one of us is one person in our shops. And so, yes, the responsibility is on us too to come and ask the questions. But you guys have people at your front counter. You can walk down to us. If we have a customer in our stores right now, we're doing everything we can to make sure they spend some money. And so it's the transparency, transparency seems to have gotten lost, communication, and, you know, someone shouldn't have to be in tears to get someone to come and talk to them. And then, you know, later that day, that was gone. No one said that. So my poor little customer, who I pretty much carry to get her into my store because she's so fragile, she called me in tears. And that's when I started crying, not to her. I took care of the gift, I got it mailed for her, but she didn't get to pick it up. That's the cost of what's happening. I can deal with that if I know that someone is going to tell me the truth. I know you can't give us exact dates, but say to us, hey, I know they're supposed to be going from Helena to Glendale, but they just jumped two blocks and they're down in front of the bank and the post office now. So we're standing there with our mouths wide open of, okay, what do we do now? You know, Stage Line Pizza, that was the best thing they could have done for us. Because we realize we're a community, we're strong, we're here for each other. And we'll get through it the best we can. And we will do our best and some of us won't get through it. And for Stage Line Pizza, those two young kids who have had a pile of dirt in front of their place to come down here and do that for us, that was the most euphoric thing I think I've done in Dillon in a really long time. Looking out my window and seeing people in line for food, seeing Mark Boak throwing pots on the sidewalk. That was my highlight. I could watch that for hours. But we all had stuff outside, my tent blew away, you know, people caught it. We were down there, we were having fun. And it's like, okay, you know, we've got history days coming up. We've done history days now two years in COVID, in the pandemic. And now, you know, we're already trying to think, where are we going to move our vendors if we can't have them out here? And so it sounds like the norm is going to be, it's dug up, packed, dug up, packed. And I get there are surprises, I get that ground sinks. And I get they don't know what they're getting into, but they should know how to solve it. And so right now, I just would like to see what's going on. Because we're sitting down there, we hear rumors. You know, we've got, anyway, and I, the Facebook posts, I mean, there was an employee of Mungus that put something on Facebook. I will not step into, I will not get into a screaming match with someone on Facebook, I don't do that. My letter to them that we faxed, I'm thinking now, didn't go anywhere. But I will call Mr. Shumway to make sure he saw it. But that's where we found out, hey, our name is changing. And we'll work with businesses that are willing to work with us. Huh, that kid's never been in my store. And that was my point to make to Mr. Shumway. And so at this point, I just want someone to talk to me. I'm not scared. I'm a pretty happy person. And when you see a street being closed, that we didn't have any clue was going to be... I get connectivity, I get there's got to be ways to connect this stuff. I understand about waiting for the water samples to come back. But dang, you guys got to come and talk to us. Thank you.
I'd like to speak. As an employer for 40 years, I know what it's like to pay wages. And I honestly can't understand why. And if it's in the contract, I can't believe that someone had signed that, that people that are coming here from Philsburg in the morning and leaving in Philsburg on their, on our paycheck, driving all the way to Dillon, which is probably two hours, to work in Dillon for, and then drive home in the afternoon on our paycheck, and that's included on our 10-hour shift, right?
They've been in here at seven and leaving at five every day. So they've been in Dillon for 10 hours.
So you think you're honestly getting 10 hours worth of work? Because I've watched them come to work at nine o'clock in the morning. And I think we all have, and probably you too. And then stand around and think about what you're going to do for a while and sit on the tracks of the excavator, smoke cigarettes, and this kind of thing. And I've paid people all my life. I know what it's like to get a quality job done for a quality wage. And I really don't feel like the city and the citizens of Dillon are getting a quality job for the non-money they're paying for wages. I don't care what they're paying these people, which I'm assuming is quite a bit. But I don't feel like we're getting 10 hours' worth of work out of these guys. And they close up on Friday or on Thursday night. They don't come back till Monday. They don't come back if it's raining or wet. You know, and I don't know how much is discussed in the contract. I haven't read the contract. And I don't think we should have to read the contract to figure out if we're getting the right amount of money or right amount of job done for our money. And I don't know how you guys feel, but I don't feel like the people in Dillon are getting a quality job for the non-money they're paying for this job. And also, I spent a lot of time in Beaufort the last 40 years. And the city of Beaufort, Silver Bowl, would be doing everything they could possibly do to sign or communicate with businesses. I don't care where they're doing the work at. Detour signs, come this way for this business, and they'll print the businesses on the signpost, come this way, barrels. Come to the alley for this business and this business, and this business comes this way. There hasn't been one thing from the city of Dillon that's had any kind of cooperation as far as trying to keep these businesses going. And I'm a very small part of this picture. But we do have business on this street and not one person from the city of Dillon even tried to help us in this situation. And that's my concern, is I don't really feel like we're getting a quality job for the non-money that we're paying these people. And I don't care where they're at with budget. I mean, I do care, but I don't feel like we're getting a quality job for the non-money we're paying these people, especially as I'm already on the budget. And that's, that's my feeling toward this situation.
Any others? Dee?
I think, thank you. I think it's my cover. And I think that everyone is pretty much, and I agree with everything that's been said. So, thank you.
Hey, I would just like to add to Debbie. I wanted to wait until the end of the meeting so we could hopefully leave it on a positive note. But I just want to echo Debbie's statement. I just want to throw a public thank you out there to Brett Mackey, Jamie Ingram over at Beaver Brewing Company. They're the ones that donated the two bags of root beer for the fundraiser. And they've also, I don't know if a lot of you are aware of it, they've offered up for English on Idaho Street that we're all welcome to set up a pop-up store at Beaver Brewing Company. So in two weeks, myself and African Oasis are going to team up. We're going to move our product down there. Hopefully people get to us down there. We're just in the planning stage, but we're making it happen. So I wanted to publicly thank Beaver Brewing, things that you have considered or talking about. Because for our business to do that, I just think it speaks for the high level now. And then also, just a huge public thank you to Josh and Lindsay Van Dyck at Stage Line Pizza. So this is a young couple that are struggling themselves. They're estimated to be losing about $450 a day when they were closed. And they approached us and said, you know, we feel like, you know, our hearts go out to you there on Idaho Street because we clearly see what you're up against. For them to do that, just the gesture of offering, it's overwhelming that someone would extend that kind of kindness. So I wanted to publicly thank them as well. And it's really not about the monies that were raised that are going to be stolen from the businesses, whatever that total is. Like Debbie said, for the first time in a long time, I saw a community. I saw people laughing, having a good time. They ran out of food by 3:30, it was delicious food. The people were in our stores. I recorded the best Saturday that I've had this year by a margin. That was so, so good to see. I needed that. I need more than one good Saturday, but it was, it's a start. And to me, it was just symbolic. And I posted on my Facebook page, you know, it's just amazing what a community can do when we come together. We shouldn't have this division. You know, we should all be home with our families. We should be doing things with our families. Not here discussing what happened or why this isn't happening. We should all be working together. These are uncomfortable meetings, I don't like attending them. And I don't think anybody in here does. I don't think we should have to. But here we are. So I hope that through all of us, we can become that thriving, bustling community that I remember of the 60s, 70s, and early 80s, growing up in this community that I love. And I hope that all of us, the silver lining is that we can figure out someone to work more cohesively together. Because I think if we had that going into this, I don't think we'd be in this position. I think that's one thing that will come out of this that hopefully will be favorable. You know, let's, let's have some action committees. You know, maybe appointed by yourself, Mayor McGinnis, you know? Let's have a business advisory committee. You know, we've got all these great committees, but I'd like to know that small business has a voice at the table too. And my guarantee is I'm going to remain involved and proactive. I've watched from my home, you know, the live streams and things, city council meetings. I'm going to be here from this point forward. And it's not just going to be about this. Because that's good community stewardship. And perhaps I failed in that respect. And I think that is important for the council and for the mayor to see us here at these meetings. I think that that shows our community activism and involvement. So that's a commitment I'm making to you. Going forward, I'm going to be at every one that I can be at. And if I can't physically be here, I'll take up the, a lot of you. But going forward, I just want to be more actively involved. And hopefully more people will do that as well, so.
And I will add that this morning, when I saw them in front of my store, I was probably almost as happy as I was Saturday at the celebration downtown. Because it's like, okay, finally. You know, I didn't let it creep into my brain, oh, are they going to be here till October? You know, are they going to be here for my birthday? But I couldn't quit smiling today. And when people came in and wanted to be negative about it, I said, no, we have to have the water lines. I said, do you know what progress this is? That they're out here digging a hole in my street? And she says, well, I might follow in it. And I said, well, don't walk on the edge. And so, you know, I'm frustrated, but I'm also still 100% in favor of this project. And I could put some, I went into all my work husbands' stores and told them all that. I said, look, I'm happy. So thank you.
I, uh, I will do whatever I can. I've talked to most of you to try to help the businesses, but not just on Idaho Street. This is wider than you guys. I mean, I'm not taking anything away from what's happening here. But I'm trying to deliver papers everywhere in town. And I can tell you, it's not just you I can't get to. I park at Standard Lumber and walk to Identity. Well, their employees are getting their butts ringed because they're driving past the barricades, but you cannot get to that building, period. I mean, it was blocked off. Identity was blocked off. You can't get from Beaver Motorsports down that street to Identity. You can't get on Idaho Street to Identity. You can't get there. Going to the laundromat has been a pain in the trench. Period. You can go in the one driveway, but then you go back out on the Montana Street. It's not just, I mean, we're all suffering. And when these businesses suffer, the radio station suffers. The Dillonite Daily suffers. The 3D is suffering. They don't have traffic flow. We don't have parking in front of our places because everybody's moved to another block. I intend to help any of you guys that want it. I will do the ads. I've, I've told you, I'll do them, I'm, okay? But I also intend, I own another building. I have the gallery building. I will give my renter this month's rent free because I know she's going to be suffering when they tear up Anna Street. So I intend to not charge her rent. Try to help her how I can. But I've been there. I mean, they tore up Montana Street. My sidewalk was five years old, they tore it up again anyway. And I'm still paying $201.98 a year on my taxes for the SID that maybe I didn't want. But we have a nice street. I'm still willing to pay for those taxes. We'll pay for this, we'll pay for Glendale, we'll pay for whatever ones we have to. But it's a community and we're all suffering as the street suffers. Walking around the corner every day from my place to the bank or to these guys' store, it's not easy. And now the sidewalks even closed by century 21. So I couldn't get down this street, I couldn't get that way to get to them. I had to go around the block. I'm getting my 10,000 steps in every day, though. So I'm just happy it's getting done. But, I mean, we need to do whatever we can to get everybody through. And it's not easy, it wasn't easy when we did Glendale. It's not easy when we did Montana. It's not easy when we did Washington or Idaho or the rest of them. But instead of fighting over it, let's figure out a way to communicate why. And, and we talked in J.C. Park, why are they starting all these places? And so you explained to me why we had to hook down the water here and why we had to hook on there. It's just that the communication came so late. And I think that's our biggest trouble is, you know what? We understand the mud and they couldn't work. We understand this, we understand that. But why are we not having that conversation a little more often and a little more cordial?
I will say Todd, or John, either one, if you guys have anything that you can type up. Because I'm downtown in the mornings quite a bit. I would be glad to walk around to the businesses. I mean, I'm not in a position to know what you know from the contractors, but if anything's written up or can be conveyed to the businesses, I'd be glad to volunteer and come down and do it.
I have copies of what I read on the radio this morning, if you would like to have that. And it's a breakdown of what roughly from Mungus. Then it has his phone number on it, and then his email address.
My question, Mayor, is that what, I'm trying to think of how to phrase this question. What in a concrete way will change in the way the city communicates with downtown businesses and the rest of Dillon, who are the patrons of downtown business? How will, what will change?
More or less, when we get a, have a meeting, we'll ask the paper, you know, so we can get something physically in our hands of this, what they plan on doing, and they get it to the businesses. We have Diane, said she'll take it to the businesses.
Well, I mean, we kind of already made that plan. And I stopped in twice in Todd's office and asked him if I could take the things up and down the street to deliver to people, and that didn't happen. So are you saying now that there'll be a weekly communication with downtown businesses?
Yeah, I'll do my best, yes.
And, and will it include what was accomplished last week and what they hope to accomplish this next week? So that...
Yeah, I'll talk to Kiphan, Nick... Yeah, I'll talk to Kiphan, Nick, two contractors, see if they can give us a- Cause most of the time what they've been giving us is what they plan on doing this coming up week.
Right.
So I'll ask him if they can make, jot down kind of a list of things they accomplished the week before.
And then, you, you know, you put those sheets of paper right next to each other. And if we kind of go off because we, here, we found a whole bunch of, uh, pipes that we didn't know where they were going, and so they had to stop at a particular place, then it makes sense to people when they, that's, you know, when that's been explained to them. Uh, but you, unless you're communicating on a regular basis and in a real concrete manner, uh, those kinds of things don't, they don't get through.
I was talking this morning to Jeremy and Lee were nice enough to give me some time and visit this morning on the radio. And I do have copies, as I said earlier, of what Mike has provided me that I have to share through the night. So, we're off and running at that point.
So will you be going back to the radio station next week?
Yes, yeah. Visit with Lee and Jeremy about that. And anytime I need to come on to talk about things, they're happy to have me.
Great. So you're gonna be doing it on a regular basis?
That's what I just indicated, will you do it Monday?
Uh, I'm Beth Sullivan, um, I manage Patagonia. Uh, I'm sorry I was late, I'm parked, sorry, bad joke. Hey, I, um, I just got home from closing up the shop and was looking at social media and found that there was a meeting starting at six. So I didn't hear anything about that. I, I don't listen to the radio, sorry Jeremy. And, um, the, otherwise, so Diane, thank you for saying that you'd do that, cause that would be super helpful for us. But I am amazed that it's taken so long for the shop owners or managers to realize or not, or to understand that there is, there was no communication, other than Facebook like that. That's, people don't check Facebook all the time. People don't listen to email or people, you know? I don't know, I, I think that's gonna be helpful, but is there anything else that? Or that we could learn from this going forward?
What would you suggest?
Um, I, I don't think I'm, um, the only one that doesn't check Facebook all the time and listen to radio.
I agree.
I think that it needs to be, um, a written document to every business. And make sure that it's not just dropped off on the calendar, that it's actually to the managers. Or email, I have to check my email hourly, like that would be. Right, it just seems super unprofessional that we're just on Facebook for the most part.
Uh, the city, I don't think it's pushing on Facebook, it's other people that's pushing out on Facebook.
What are you posting on?
Mainly, we put it out there, post it, and it goes into the papers. You know, Brenda puts it in the Dillanite Daily sometimes.
So it puts the onus on us to find out what's going on.
Well, they do send out emails too, but I mean, they have a list of email addresses that, and if you put your name on there, I think you'll probably get every meet, city meeting notice there is.
Forever.
Yeah.
No, she's asking about, uh, about information about the water sewer project.
Right, but I mean, she's asking about email a little bit.
Is there an email, I mean, I haven't gotten an email on-
Well, I was referring to tonight's meeting, cause it went out.
I got an email.
Email.
Who else got an email?
I got an email about it, cause I'm on the city's, I'm on the city's email list.
And I've, I mean, when I've gotten notice from Pioneer Federal, you know, it's gonna affect our drive-through, so go this way. And I put that in forum. When the Bank of Commerce got notified, you know, these three days it's gonna affect drive this way. Of course, the timeline turned out to be different. And personally, then when I tried to get down the alley myself, some inconsiderate other person parked in the alley and went into the dentist or hub or, and left their truck and blocked the alley. So, I mean, that's not the bank's fault, and that's not the construction people's fault. It is lack of consideration by life, people. But, I mean, and I can get that notice out the next day, Jeremy can put it out that day.
I can put it out instantly.
He can put it out, I can't put it out till the next day. The radio can announce it whenever they get that notice, if they get it in the morning. And we could try that way, because I know, even if you meet weekly, that timeframe is changing. And, so even if we had a notice Monday morning of what they intend, or on Wednesday morning what they intend, and how we can help those businesses get to them, whether it's going down an alley or going up a fire escape, or whatever we gotta do. But, we can put it on Southwest Montana News, we can put it on the radio, we can put it in the Dillanite, and we can put it on Facebook. And we can do it more than once a week. We can do it, I mean, Monday, we can help Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, can help Wednesday, Thursday. For God's sake, they're not gonna work on Friday, so. But let's do it twice a week. What we know. Doesn't have to be long, just facts.
Mark, what were the things that I look at? If you were a tourist traveling in Dillon, Montana, you go down Dillon Street, would you even consider trying to get downtown? There's no signage. There's, there's nothing that says, welcome to Dillon, the construction, you know, and you're welcome to come to shop. You know, there's detour signs, nothing. If you go down this street right here or anywhere around this construction, you, you, if you were a tourist and you wanted to just hang out in Dillon, you wouldn't do it. I, I don't know anybody who would try to attempt that. You know, and I'm, I'm not, you know, we're all pointing fingers at the city, because we haven't done our job, and probably all haven't done our job a little bit, but the, the problem is, is we're not making this thing attractive at all for out-of-town people that come shopping in our stores. And we all depend on that, every one of us. The out-of-town tourist business is huge for all of us. But the local people are great, but we all have to get to them or something, and it's a summer desert. And I think we all know that. So we need to come up with a plan, some kind of, you know, something, signage on the edges of town or wherever, to make those tourists understand that we still want them in our city. We still want them to come down and try to get around our businesses, some or another. And, you know, the way that we notify businesses is probably somebody, you know, we all have hours, we all are posting hours on our businesses, so it's not an excuse not to be able to get to our businesses during business hours to notify us what's going on. And we're all open, every, we're all open. Cause the way we found out about the meeting was Jeremy putting letters in our doorknob on our businesses on Saturday. You know, that's how we found out about it. Anyway, I just feel, feel like we can all work a little bit closer together, maybe, and figure out a way to make our town a little bit more attractive. We even thought this, this tore up bad everywhere. Just so tourists could at least know they're welcome here in Dillon. Cause right now this looks like they are. I wouldn't try it. If I was driving into somebody else's city, I wouldn't attempt it.
Mark, um, is it possible, just cause I know what's gonna happen if we don't set up some action plans? Um, is it possible for, cause you are so creative, for you to create in your head and even draw out on a piece of paper four signs? And where those signs should be placed and what they would say? Excuse our mess, downtown is open and ready for you, ready for you to come in. Or whatever you think would be something that would be good to put on those signs? And where they should be posted? That would help the city, uh, carry that out. What about billboards?
There's probably some-
A billboard. There's an idea, can you come up with a billboard and let's see if we can get that by the city? And where should we put that billboard?
I'd have to check, grab it now, see if there's any open ones.
But, I mean, that's the kind of thing that, uh, if you have some ideas, when you put them on paper, then they tend to get acted on. And that, that's what makes it, makes it run.
Yeah, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, what Mary Jo's saying is exactly right. In April, we had this same damn meeting. And we talked about the same things. And unless we actually appoint somebody to take action and say, this person is gonna get this done, and they're gonna be held accountable, it won't get done. Because we went through the same thing in April. We had people lined up, the mayor was gonna drop off papers, Todd was gonna drop off papers to every business. And we talked about it at a meeting. We had lengthy meeting. We talked about this for like half hour now. And nothing happened. So I'm afraid, this is what I'm afraid, unless we direct somebody to get this thing done and someone takes responsibility from the city, that it's just gonna be, this is just gonna turn into a pitch session. And that's how we'll view it, you know, six months from now. Nothing will have got there.
Well, I think the city council should get it done, okay? So you guys need to step it up, because we're running businesses, okay? So you guys just need to help us out. There's it, there it is.
And Diane's already said-
And Diane's already there, so please talk amongst yourselves.
And Diane's taken-
This meeting's gone.
And Diane's taken, you know, action, but the city council is a legislative one. It's more of a, we approve things, but we, we're not hired by the city to do these things. And so, and you might laugh about that.
But I'm saying you could help us, okay?
Oh, yeah, no.
You guys are all part of this.
Oh, I know it, I know it. And that's what it comes down to. If it's gonna get done, it's probably gonna have to be the city council that volunteer, just like Diane did.
Thank you for volunteering. Where's the Chamber of Commerce get into this?
Have no clue. They had that first lunch and learning, you had to pay for your lunch to go to that meeting. And that kind of fizzled, so I don't know.
They're doing a lunch and learn Thursday downtown where it's free lunch.
Well, the LP3, yeah. Quarter of the American, they're a little, they're a little just, they're gonna do their lunch and learn and Pioneer Federal's paying.
Yes.
And they'll do it every, I think it's every month during the summer, right? Or every week?
They're only saying this one is the one they're doing downtown.
Okay. I went to their meeting last week and they're, they're hoping to make that-
Okay.
A very regular thing.
Yeah, but share that with us.
Um, and, and to clarify, uh, Corey, you could go to, uh, any of their meetings. You don't have, I most of the time don't buy lunch, cause it is expensive lunch.
It's at noon.
And I know.
It's at noon.
And when you have a business, noon is tough. Yeah, it is.
And we have shared that, you know.
They, they have a map. They had ideas. And I need to put a squash to that two days ago, or yesterday.
If the map was a start.
The map was a start. And it says, come down, shop, district, Montana and Idaho. But, they cut off several blocks of Montana and Idaho businesses. They also have business names wrong. They have businesses left out. And I told them I didn't think that was appropriate.
Did they exclude them non-Chamber members, is that what you're thinking?
No, it isn't, no, that is not the case. Just, they put half the bars and left the other half out. I mean, people wanna find the bars, they're gonna find the bars, but that's, you still don't send out a map from the Chamber, I'm sorry, that only has part of the businesses. You left Lynn's Little Shop out, you've put unwanted treasures, who is no longer in business. If you're going to be a Chamber and represent the business, you should do all businesses. And I'm, I told her so, I'm sorry. And I also, and then she said, well, okay, my idea is to help the businesses on Idaho Street. I said, a Chamber shouldn't represent just one street. And if you're gonna do that, then you go down and do Identity there on Idaho. You didn't include them. I will help, I will send out this map, I will encourage people to shop downtown, but I'm not gonna include just part of them. They need to all be included. And I, I think you need to fix it before we send it out to the public. So she says she's working on it. Then the answer was, okay, well, we'll just take Montana Street off. That isn't helping business by just, well, I'll take Montana Street off and I'll add Washington. Okay, go ahead, we'll do it, but I think it's gonna cause hard feelings to the Chamber. And I don't think that's how she should do it. And I liked it at that, and she's working on it, so I agree.
I think that one of the really good things that can come of all of this, all of us problem solving, considering the issues that are in front of us, navigating the difficulties with a construction company, is, there's a real opportunity for us to create a cohesive community of, um, like, things like what you just said, basically, to the Chamber. No, there's more than just this. Your intention for Idaho Street is, um, good, but if we don't, I mean, that's fine, that's a band-aid on our problem maybe somewhat, but really what we need to do is, we're a whole community, and our community starts, I don't know, at the golf course, and it extends to what? Our car district, our hospital. And it goes from the east to the west. We need, I think one of the really great things that can come out of this is the brainstorming and problem solving that brings us back to a viable, whole community that has the capacity to come together and just, and just really work well. And I just, I'm real hopeful about that. And I think it's a great brainstorming opportunity for people to say, I can do this, like Diane's doing. Or, you know, like our meeting the other night, uh, when we were here for the city council, there were, there were good, there were things that came out of that. Yes, um, yes, uh, it's like George said, there are things that we had hoped to, um, do that had fallen to the cracks. So, okay, we know that there's a propensity for that, now how are we gonna change that? Those are good things that are coming. We have the potential for a lot of real positive things to come out of this. It's, you know, it's always painful when you have to suffer through a process, but there's possibility in this process. There's a lot of really great people here, and it's a great community, and there's a lot of good business potential here. I think we capitalize on that. I, I really believe we can.
I agree, Dee. And I think that, um, I think your hubby has a real good idea too about, I mean, I, when he said that, uh, he had a lot of knowledge about Butte, and I know he did. I mean, he went down and forth every day. But, um, I was in Butte last week, and they're doing a bunch of construction uh, on the side streets off of Harrison Street. And, um, there were all these orange, they were great big barrels. And then on top of the barrel was a sign that said, uh, if you wanted, cause I was trying to get to a business that was out Harrison by Staples. And it said, if you wanna go to Staples, turn here. And it said, Staples customers, turn here. And then it had like a smiley face or something. But I mean, it was cute, it caught your attention. Um, and if we had a few of those, you know, that said, uh, you wanna get to downtown business, turn here. They're open and waiting for you. Or, um, Debbie's Bookstore is right at the store, you know? I mean, Patagonia, there are tons of great signs that you could make that could go on movable barrels and could be used, um, as the project, you know, progresses.
And I'm assuming that's probably done by the city, that you-
It is, and I, I'm gonna, I can take- It is, and I'm gonna, I can take my car back up there, but I'll take some pictures of those barrels too.
Well, I've seen it for forty years now, and they have this.
You know exactly.
They do that for all their businesses. Their business means a lot to Butte, Chicago. They've been through struggles like this for twenty-something years, before. They've struggled, and they, they can't get people to come into their city and shop.
Shop, yeah.
And they, they, I mean, they, they've done a lot.
So might be the city to give their road crew, or their street crew, whoever there's, who's ever superintendent of that department, a call and figure out how they do it?
Well, it's all, a lot of this stuff's been funded a lot through the COVID, right? I don't know. I'm not sure how much that money's available for this kind of situations, but there possibly money for that, you know, and I'm sure the city has budgets to try to live by, but, uh, the project's funded a lot through COVID relief, like, and the promotion of some of the city businesses can come through this, this same, and that way, you set up to do that, but it's all one of the same right now. But you're right, George, it takes somebody to do it. I mean, we have to figure out, you know, a plan. Whether it's a city employee, paid for a separate budget, or whatever it takes. People downtown are trying to run a business, and they can't leave the business to go put up signage and barricades and stuff like that. That's not, we wouldn't put them in the right spot anyway, probably. So that has to be somebody that's run by a director of the city. This is where we need this, this is where we need that. Somebody would work with a construction company to figure out a way to do that. But I just said, I think that's a simple way of helping out a lot, you know, giving people a direction to build, if anybody knows what direction they're gonna go. Right now, I'm not sure that's a possibility. But that's, that's part of the problem I'm talking about, nobody knows anything, so, you know, construction companies, everything is dropping off a lot, and not letting the city know what they're doing either. So that's, I, I don't know, I don't have the answers for that. And that's be something that has to be done through the director of the city. I'm sure the state holds your contact with them, but these businesses aren't going anywhere. Street projects moving around, businesses stay where they're at. So it's kinda hard to figure out how to get to them if you don't, the signage, you know, help a lot. Especially even for Patagonia, those tourist businesses, oh yeah, they're up to ninety-seven percent. You start blocking off all those streets, and you got people parking where they shouldn't be, or drag those streets where they shouldn't be, you know, it needs signage sometime. And I really feel like that's a responsibility of the city.
And that signage is gonna have to change daily? Twice a day? I mean, in, like I said, delivering papers, morning route and afternoon route, it changes from morning to night, on every street of what's open, what's not open? And it would be a full-time job for somebody to be putting out those signs and changing those signs and doing it. And it, it's going to be a full-time job of putting out cones or barrels and moving them and changing them.
And you gotta consider, you know, I work for Todd and Marcy three days a week. It's really hard just to get the garbage picked up. We don't want Canada now. And, you know, I mean, we have to do a lot different routes than we ever did before, just to try to get to the businesses to get it. And if you, we have one container, even sports, we haven't been able to get to for a week. You know what it's like when the garbage starts piling up. And that's a very big concern, I'm sure, of the cities. We don't want garbage piled up. But there's no way to give it to them.
So are we meeting again with, hopefully with the contractor and engineer here?
Yep, Paul. Supposed to be on a call with Kevin tomorrow. We'll see what we can do for next week.
And then you'll let us know.
Yeah. And, huh, signage, good, they'll work at that.
Does the city not have any poll as far as, I mean, obviously, you guys have been in it from day one, just torn up, that, I know we're too, way too far into this to quit them and ask another group, but where are, and maybe I just need to read, because I was late, but where are we with that? They're still on six-hour days, four days a week?
Yeah, they run, you know, four days a week, ten hours a day.
But they, two, four of those are travel, so six hours?
I don't know. I leave my house, I'm usually around town by seven. I see, you know, there's days there haven't been, but I've seen people firing up the excavators at seven in the morning. And I see a lot of them leaving at five, so, I don't know if some leave early or not. Yeah, I'll talk with the engineer and ask some questions like that.
Well, and part of that too, and it's in the contract, that there would be two crews working at all times. There's barely one crew working. And last Thursday morning, I was right here in front of, I think it was Debbie's Bookstore. I was right in front of Debbie, or maybe it was African Oasis, and came out and talked to the young man, who was kinda, it was ten-thirty in the morning, he was just kinda standing around. And, and we were talking, and I said, "So do you have both crews working?" And he said, "No, we have to send that other crew to Idaho. We're, we're just waiting on some pipe here." And I said, "Oh, how long has that crew been in Idaho?" And he said, "Three weeks." So, you know, there's just, it's kind of one of those things where we don't, we're not staying on top of the fact that there's not two crews working ten hours a day, four days a week. Are they held accountable at all? On the days that, you know, they just don't show up, or, like, I watched out the bathroom over by the Dollar Store. There, there were three, four days in a row, they didn't show up, and then it was the weekend, and then they'd show up for two days, and just two people, and, you know, it's, and I know they're spread around. At that point, they weren't really spread around. But are they, I know that if you hire someone and they don't produce, that you can find them by the day.
A lot of the days when you see people just standing around, they're waiting on tests. If you, they have to test all the pipe with the back tees and stuff. So if they're not out there tearing stuff up, just don't mean they're not working. They're waiting for a test to get in, to do anything. That's what it is, is we see people, you know, all of a sudden they're going, gangbusters down the road, get it blocked down, and then it looks like work just stops for a week. That's when they are testing the pipe.
Is someone monitoring that? They could say, "Yeah, we're testing."
Yeah, the engineer is.
And you feel confident that...
And then you have to send it to the state to get the test done, yes.
Timeframe, is anyone on them as a timeframe? Okay, test one in, test usually takes four days, now it's been seven. Is there anyone monitoring that? Is it from the city, so that we're...
Not, not the city, no. Yeah, that's why we hire an engineer.
But then, yeah. So they send a crew away, we don't have a say as city. They send just a partial crew, and...
So far, I've never seen just a partial crew, I guess, here. You know, people say, you know, "Two crews," I've been there today, there's two crews working. There's days they were working over here and over there, there's two crews been going to Dillon since they started this, pretty much. There's been days where only had one come in here. I know Kip, and they brought a small crew on Friday, a couple times, to work out here, trying to get this dragged out, which is, Kip was on his own time, and the guys that worked for him, I don't know where, how he convinced them to come do it without paying it, or, you know. They're getting paid, but not under, under the contract, so.
Beth, I'd like to address that if I could. I read the contract. When I was here last week, I had posted a copy from Mayor McGinnly, gave it to me. I spent two days going over. A lot of it didn't make much sense to me, because I'm not an engineer, but I did find what I was looking for in the contract. And there is a, a sequence of work that they were supposed to have worked. We've gone through that many times here at meetings, starting at Helena, working toward Seabridge. They're giving a specific amount of time to get that done. They didn't do that, they're outside, they're in breach of the contract, basically, in my opinion. But to answer your question, so, the engineer, Dow Engineering Inc., has no authority over Mungus Construction. It specifies out right in the contract. They have no authority over the construction company. So if anybody's gonna have any oversight over even the engineers or the construction company, which has been my issue for most of these meetings, it has to be somebody from our city that is overseeing that. I had a copy of the matrix, the timeline from Mungus that I received prior to the start of the project. A good example, they were supposed to have dug up, buried the main gravel, reopen our block in front of the forty-four oh six by April twenty-seventh. It clearly states that Mungus' own timeline. That didn't happen. On April twenty-eighth, somebody should have been down there saying, "Why is this not completed yet? That's where we failed." Doesn't matter now, but I'm just explaining, because it is what it is now, and we're out, we're out. But that is the issue. And as Mary Jo stated, I think Dan and I had run ahead, we had nobody babysitting the babysitter. So the engineers can oversee it, but they have no authority whatsoever in the contract to do anything with the construction company. So if that's been happening, it's gotta be a mess. That's why, that's why I keep going over and over the contract.
Is there any stipulation that if they don't fit into the timeframe, that they're penalized?
They can be assessed fines and penalties, but that's a whole nother...
Who assesses that? Who?
I, I, I'm not an attorney. I would have to, you know, defer to the city attorney. And that's way beyond my jurisdiction. All I know is that based on what I read, it's clear text, they're, they're not a department, and they haven't been for weeks, in my opinion.
See, part of this issue is the city doesn't have an engineer on staff. So that's why we hired Dow for us, to be our, our eyes and ears, and they've got inspectors that've been walking around these crews all the time. My friend just talked to him yesterday morning about some paving issues that didn't appear to be getting addressed correctly. He said, "Okay, I'll go back and look at them again." So there is some oversight there, and if it doesn't, doesn't meet spec, he just tells Mungus' supervisor, and the supervisor's gotta take care of it. It's that simple. But he can't direct the crew, you're correct.
The problem, Don, is, and I'm gonna use this as an example, at our last meeting, which I, we're into June, so maybe it was, the last meeting was in April, and I believe that Rob Thomas came, and he, he had a list of things that were problematic at his home. He even, I mean, it was a list of pretty serious things. And I emailed him last week to say, "Rob, I'm back in town. I wanna just make sure that those things were taken care of for you, taken care of for you." Because I was sure that, because, I mean, the engineer that night stood up and said, "We will be there the next day, and we will get these things fixed." And I, so I was shocked when Rob emailed back and said, "Nope, nobody's been here, nothing's been done." And then he sent me pictures of all the things that haven't been done. And I think that's, you know, when the contract, or the engineers are supposed to be providing some oversight of the contractors. And when the engineers stand up here and say, "We'll be there the next day," and now here we are, two and a half months later, and they haven't been there.
Mary Jo, I'd like to correct you. So I was on May eighteenth, the engineer referred to, I was here. And that wasn't the engineer that stated that. That was Mr. Shumway, who represents Mungus Construction.
Okay, I'm, I'm, thank you.
Which is, yeah, I just wanted to, that wasn't the engineer that indicated.
Okay, and so it would have been on April eighteenth, not May eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
I wasn't here May eighteenth. I wasn't in the country. It had to be in April. But anyway, there is like that, I was talking to somebody else from the city today. We have two homeowners down at the corner of Idaho and, that would be Orr Street, who are having a terrible time, and who have sent long letters to the city and to the Mungus, to the contractors, of problems that they're having. And those problems haven't been addressed. Those are people who have terrible breathing issues. And yesterday, I went out there and stood at the corner of Orr and Idaho, and Orr and Washington Street, and watched the wind bring these dust clouds up Idaho Street and up Washington Street. And I totally understand where they're coming from. As I explained to the contractor, all it would take is to just get a street cleaning machine up there and clean the streets. It would make, it would make life for those people who live, who have to live there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, so much easier. And I had said that to Kevin Johnson at least three times. And Kevin said to me, in a city council meeting, "We'll be there next week." And they've never been there. So what do we do? How do, you're head of the water sewer committee, how do we address that when the babysitter doesn't tell us the truth? When the construction manager doesn't follow through? How do we handle that, Don?
I was talking to Kip as well, kinda teasing him, why didn't he go out and buy himself a street sweeper? He says, "I did it in bed." I says, "Oh, what was that?" He says, "I hired a subcontractor at Scotland, they're gonna take care of it." And that's where he left it. So he didn't follow up with the subcontractor, which is Acme Asphalt. Because I see the street sweeper parked over a little block and a half away from us.
There's some in here that you can't get to, but that's not what we're here to even talk about. I mean, the city's got a desk parking lot over here. I have to replace with that one. I had to, I told the...
I told the...
I don't leave...
But that's not what we're here for. We're here to help other water sewer projects.
I'd like to ask one more question. If this job ends up going in too quickly, like summer or the fall, and they're, I'm assuming even way over the budget on contract due phase?
If they go over the timeline, I think they start getting an assessment. Fine.
No, I'm not talking about the timeline, I'm talking about the budget.
They signed the contract, so once it's over, you know, they'll have to finish the project. Or ask for more money from us, and if the sewer, we know, the council don't approve it, they have to fulfill their...
So the project that went under the river that went over budget by five hundred thousand?
That was two hundred.
Roughly?
Two hundred.
But who paid for that?
He brought, he worked to the city, he approved it, so...
So why would they even try to be on a timeline, on a budget, if they know they're gonna come to the city, and the city's gonna say, "Yeah, it's not a problem, we'll do that." And the taxpayers pay to build it. I, I did, they're not gonna work ten hours if they can get by six and get paid for ten and extend the job till October. Why not? If they know they can come to the city and get paid, it's just a longer job for them, right? And I don't know. So what's the city planning on doing there? Because maybe we can put some contingency on this company to try to get the job done by cutting off that supply line of money. I mean, obviously, that supply is probably funded a little bit by COVID, but a lot of it's coming out of the taxpayers' pocket, right? And when you pay for bits, like however much it was, I'm not sure, but, and over charges or over budget on a job that goes under the city. But he did those jobs, those people do that for a living. Coleman does that for a living. It's not up to the city to make up for the problems they have for it. Or for going on, or over budget into October. I'd like to know if we're gonna get charged more for that. What, you know, how, what's the city feel like? Who is gonna cut them off for, you know, let them keep... What, you know, how, what's the city feel like? What are you guys going to cut them off or, you know, let them keep doing it? Just thought, you know, I'm sure no one wants to answer that question.
You know, and you have to go over, like, every week or month, have to put in a change order to say, you know, this changed, will, you know, pay for it? If the city says, "No, no, it won't get paid for it."
And then you've got a company that sold it, another company that's going to, you know, I play with what happens, they say, "Well, the job stops today. You got to finish the job."
They are, Mark, too. So that the company comes in, hires somebody to finish it up, and then they're through contract, basically, and that happens.
Well, I, I think it can be a concern for everybody, including you guys, because, you know, this job's going way longer than it's supposed to. Somebody's going to have to pay for that. Just thought.
Sort of piggyback on what Mark was saying is incrementally, if they say, "Hey, we were supposed to be, you know, past Ron's, what, two months ago?"
Well, my illustration was the original time in Mungus, which is the engineer, Kevin stood up there at a meeting, and so that was never realistic, given based on his opinion. So the engineer's opinion was already different than the construction company. My point was, I felt that that timeline that was provided by Mungus Construction was unreasonable, it was whitewashed for public view. That's my personal opinion on that. Because when I asked, "Well, when's this thing going to get paid?", he said, "I can't answer that, I haven't even contacted a subcontractor, but they can do it." So, okay, well, if you haven't done that, then how could you show a paving day on your own timeline if you haven't even contacted the paving company? Which is why I always go back to the paving.
And that's what I'm wondering in the contract, incrementally, can we start to charge them?
No.
No, you can't. I think you probably can't assess until after the project's over anyway. And I might get that. But my whole point in all of that, maybe bring it up. And the reason I read the contract is I wanted to know what I was talking about when I came to the council meeting last week in the 40th of August. And I had, I've almost, I've just heard so much about this contract. This thing was signed in March of 2020, by the former administration. Some of the council members were here, some weren't. I know nothing about construction. I know a lot about contracts. I've worked with the state government. I know a whole lot about leadership and logistics, and varying, I think, is where the problems go. And my whole point was that we just had no oversight from the GECO. There should have been, in my opinion, a communications officer appointed, that's the person that was going to, you know, go up and down the businesses. There should have been somebody appointed on signage. There was no parking plan, no building signage plan. There was no business signage plan, all the things that Mark talked about. These are things that going forward, I think, that will come out of this, some good things, is we developed a process that we could have been keyed up on some of these things from the GECO way back before this project was even signed. The minute that contract was signed, we should have already been putting these things in place in preparation for the April 4th start date, which now we know didn't even start till April 18th, for whatever reason, the project got started earlier. You can lay it on weather, you can lay it on this or that weather. But we were, we were doing from the GECO because we hadn't done those things. It was a military, called metal. That's a mission, essential task for us. Those are the things that are essential to successfully accomplish in the mission. And then you backplan from your benchmark, your starting point, your area of operation, and then you backplan so that you hit those timelines that you stated you were going to hit, you know, in a mission that's crucial. And I think that this should have been treated that same way. We had no metal going in this, in my opinion. There was no mission essential tasks. Some of us didn't even have a clear view of what the mission was, let alone, you know, the list that we needed to build.
So what is the last day of this project, supposedly?
The last day.
Okay, so they're not going to be past our street by then. So...
They're paid new out of here by the end of mid-August.
Okay, that, that, but they're four weeks behind or something. So is there a plan in place that we'll start to charge them, you as a city, start to charge them from day one when they, when they are not finished, that we can give percentage back to the mom and pop shops that are losing? Big time. I, I feel like we're going to have to have some, a clump of monies to pay for lawsuits. I mean, we're putting people out of business. Like, I, I work for a company, people are going to come find us. You know, they drove three or four hours, or sometimes built their whole vacation route coming. But we're waiting. You know, people get, are parking in the dollar parking lot, I mean, maybe we start to rent some parking. Maybe we can rent here so people don't have to, you know, they actually can just walk two blocks rather than just stay at home because they feel like it's going to be too much of a walk for them. Or the older folks say, "Can't walk." You know, and do we have anything like that in place? I mean, I feel like, though, just from what I'm hearing, that we, yes, we say we're going to do the flyers, and we're going to say, say we're going to do this, and it has fallen through, my fear is that the final date's going to show up. We're not going to have a plan in place to start charging them and get some of this money back that can help our community out.
It's in place already in the contract, but as soon as that last day hits, the next day, if they're not managed to get, to get assessed, it's $1,000 a day.
Okay, who's, who's in charge of that?
Uh, an engineer.
The one that really doesn't have say over what they do?
But, I mean, when they extend a little other time, it, it costs like $20,000 because they, before they could get a change order put in out there.
And did the city see that?
Yeah, they took off their bill.
But now they're adding on to the bill. I just, I, you know, we see folks that come every year, and they're like, "We're going to shop every year." This Dillon's such a great place, and they stay, and they camp, and they do all the wonderful things that can happen around here. And we're, we're losing them. We should have had so much traffic from Yellowstone. People just should have. But you come to the end of the street, I watched a gentleman pull out right here, or was it one street over? He had to do wheelies. He, he couldn't go in because there was barriers. He couldn't go out because, and he didn't realize, oh, you could pass on that one left part of the street to get over. He was like, I was watching him, this this older gentleman, he was so sad, I was like, "Yeah, welcome to Dillon." No signage at all, even on the barriers now. Like, that's all gone. So, okay, okay, so I, I, I feel like if you do have someone in place, other than Dow, is someone policing Dow? On that final, on that final day when they're supposed to be done?
Yeah, but it'd be easy to Dillon.
Okay, same ones that were going to go door to door and talk to us and go to every business? Because that, that's fierce. I think that it needs to be more concrete. And maybe, you know, the city knows that who's in charge of that. So that the folks in the businesses can go to them and say, "It's, today's the day." They still aren't done with past, you know, past Sweetwater.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
There may not be anybody here that can answer the question, but who was the, who decided when they were going to start this project? April, May 18th, July, August? I mean, the project, in my opinion, would have been a lot easier for everyone if it was started the first of September.
I don't think it should have been completed by last November.
Oh, really?
Yeah, when they first signed, they were going to start in, maybe last year. They couldn't get supplies, everything, so it was pushed off until sometime in August when they first started the project. So from the beginning, because of COVID and everything, and supply conditions, they didn't get started. As Mayor Clatten last year, he said, "I'm going to run this project right up for you before you take over, if you, if you will..." Guess what? I'm being, I have to say, and I go, but I can't in the contract.
Well, somebody had to make the decision to start the project in, what was it, April 1st or April 4th?
April 4th. When they closed down last year, they said they're going to resume April 1st because that's when they thought, be thought, when they put above ground lines. They can't start in February with above-ground lines, water lines.
Did anyone ask the businesses what busiest months they were?
Uh, I don't know if they did last year or not. But it was, be going last year, so.
We as, we consider the summer our holiday with the anglers and then the hunters and the early runoff fisher, anglers. So we make, out of the 40 stores, we make more in the summer than they do in, it's considered our holiday. It's our busiest time. Like, we hire, you know, three times more people, and now, and I, I think that that's how it is for most of the businesses.
Absolutely. Before, I don't know, that's not true. So I don't pay, so. But I, I listened to things people said with, talk with Kevin tomorrow, a lot of them answered.
And you'll figure out a way to communicate them back to us.
Yes.
On a regular basis.
And I would say just if you haven't given them your email, give it to John when we leave. So maybe that's an easy way to do it. If everybody has their email, you know, the secretary can send them. But it needs to be communicated to the businesses that haven't even been affected yet, which there's several, you know. What if you get that, and they're not in here tonight because they haven't been affected by it? No one comes till they're affected and they're not, but they will be. And they're going to be just as concerned as we are. So maybe we can do something to keep them from feeling the pain of the benefit through this project, so.
Well, and that might be, Mark, a great thing for Diane to include when you're walking door to door, to just take a, you know, clipboard and get, make sure that the city has everybody, the name of the business, the manager's name, and the email address. So that there is a very complete list on hand with the city, especially if, you know, I mean, what if a water main broker or something, they needed to get in touch with everybody or whatever. But you'd have a real complete list of current email addresses for down-town businesses.
And they also say you have to be on Idaho Street.
Right. Be nice on that to have, compared to last year's sales, the decreased percentage of sales. You would like to know that? No, not, I don't want to know. I mean, just so that the city knows how people are suffering, and how many folks had to close down, how many people had to lay off, you know. How many people you had to lay off that week? Yeah, I agree. I, I, and I remember when Jerry Trudecchi, I remember standing and being in a meeting with you when you were, you were talking about Sunday Night Rodeo and what Labor Day weekend meant to your business. So, I mean, I, I get that.
Okay, I'll get with him and be back in touch with you.
See you next week? It's a date.
Okay, how, who are you going to charge of the budget?
No, they're going to set that up for the contract.